Well, I have...
Oh, cool.
It looks like you had ten of them there. I don't know what's going on. Wherever you are, buddy.
Call to order the March 19, 2013 Regular Meeting of the Joliet City Council, Mayor Tom Girotti presiding. The invocation tonight will be given by Reverend Charles Rains of the Fellowship Baptist Church at 122 Morris Street, after which he'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Reverend, if you would, remember Bob Miller in your prayer. He's a retired police officer that passed away.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for our great country and for those who serve so willingly, even unto death. We pray for this dear man now gone. Pray that his family might find rest in you. And I thank you for those here tonight who acknowledge that they must look to you for understanding and wisdom as they seek to conduct the business before them in the name of the many thousands that they represent. And so we ask for your understanding and your wisdom to guide them tonight and through all the days of their service. In the name of the Lord Jesus, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor.
I'll start with roll call. Mayor Girotti?
Here.
Councilwoman Barber?
Here.
Councilman Fisher?
Here.
Councilman Girl?
Here.
Councilman Hug?
Here.
Councilman Morris?
Here.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Here.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Here.
Councilman Turk?
Here.
First, approval of minutes. Is there a motion at the minutes of the combined council?
If I may, before we get into the agenda, I would like to have an executive session to discuss what was discussed last night after the meeting. I talked to Jeff Kleiman, and Jeff Kleiman said it is executive session material, and I would undertake a motion to go into executive session to discuss that.
Mr. Mayor, the basis for the record would be personnel.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to go into executive session to discuss personnel. Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Mayor Girotti?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Jeff, do we need a motion to go back into regular session?
You're in open session, so I've asked a clerk just to resume where we stopped.
Okay, alright.
Girotti?
Yes?
I'd just like to make a comment. Nothing about was discussed in closed session, but I think we just need to clear some stuff up. And, you know, last night, I received a call from Bob Ocon from the Herald News about nine o'clock wanting to know if I had gotten an email from Tom Thanos announcing his resignation. And I had looked at my email. I went on my email, called him back, said I got it, but I couldn't open the attachment. He basically told me he had information, what it said, and I couldn't verify that until I got to work to open my email, you know. I wasn't happy with the resignation, and my comment is that, you know, I've been here, I've known Tom Thanos for 26 years, and I've known him to be a person of the highest integrity and honesty. I've enjoyed working with him. I think he gives his heart and soul to the city. Probably the only person here in this room right now that knows more about Tom Thanos is Councilman Joe Chitino sitting over there, because he was here longer than myself. But I, for one, do not intend on accepting his resignation. And I don't know how everybody else feels, but I'm gonna move that we do not accept his resignation.
I second that.
Comments?
I have a comment. You know, I thought so much today about what happened yesterday, and not about details, but about overall where we're going as a city and what's happening up here. And this is not a reflection on any one person or anybody. And my job is to do what I think is best for the city of Joliet, and nothing more. And I've worked with Tom Thanos for, as a staff member. I've worked with him now for two years as a city councilman. I, too, have the highest respect for Tom Thanos. And I know Tom Thanos has brought our city back from, we could have been in, we were in bad shape, we could be in terrible shape right now. It's because of the work ethic and the dedication he has to Joliet. And you don't find a lot of people, a lot of professionals, a lot of bureaucrats, that have that same type of dedication. And I'll put the word out there, love for their hometown. I think it's in the best interest of our city that Tom Thanos stays, and I agree with Mike Turk. All I care about is Joliet. And I think, at this point where we're at right now, for a change to happen, and I know this is a personal decision by Tom Thanos, and I wouldn't want to be in his shoes and have to go through all these different issues. It's in our best interest that Tom Thanos stays, and I agree with Mike Turk that I also... What was your comment? What was your motion?
To not accept his resignation.
I also would not, I also would vote not to accept his resignation. And again, it's not because of Tom Thanos as an individual, it's not because of any one person up here, it's in the best interest of the city of Joliet.
Just a couple of comments. I couldn't agree with you and Mike more. When Tom took over, this city was really hurting. The economy went down. He's led us through tough times, and I am not afraid to say that the city of Joliet is in a lot better shape than most all other cities. We went from a $17 million deficit. We have enough money to last us two months should anything dire happen. And it's because of his leadership, and he's taken some heat, and he continues to take heat over this detention center, which is uncalled for, because we don't even know where that's at. We don't know if they're coming to Joliet, or if they're looking at another city, and for people to stand up here and make accusations to him for just doing his job, okay? And that has come back to us. They shouldn't be addressing us like Councilman Girl said last night, if you've got a problem, bring it to us. Tom is only doing what he gets paid for, and he does the job very well. I've known him for, you know, as president of the firefighters for 16 years, I dealt with Tom across the table negotiating. Tom was the most honest attorney that I've ever sat across the table with, other than Jeff. And I hold him with the utmost esteem, his integrity is beyond reproach, and I hate to think, I hate to think, what will happen to this city if Tom leaves. That's all I got.
I agree.
Krista?
It's been motioned and seconded not to accept City Manager Tom Thanos's resignation. Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
I would hope that Tom reconsider's and stays as well. I vote aye.
Councilman Hug?
I'm not comfortable telling Tom, who's an intelligent man, what he should or shouldn't do. Myself or nobody that I'm aware of asked him to resign, nor will I try to pressure him to stay. I will simply ask Tom to do what he thinks is right for him and his family. I'll abstain.
Councilman Morris?
Tom is probably one of the best city managers in this country, and I say that because I have met other alderman council people throughout this country in the last couple of years. Some know Tom personally, or some have heard of him, or talked with other people that knows him personally. And as others have said, the city would really be in a pretty bad situation if Tom was to leave us now or even in the near future. We know that there will come a time when Tom will retire and move on. But Tom has taken a lot over these last several weeks with the detention center, and Tom, as the mayor just said, he was only doing what he's paid to do. And again, as the mayor and John said last night, if it do come to a point where they want to come here, the discussion should be with the city council. Tom is only doing what Tom is paid to do, and he does an excellent job at it. I vote aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
I agree with most of the comments I've heard regarding this. A couple of things I'd like to say. I think it's unfortunate that the questions that I asked yesterday and the others in the council asked has turned into some claim that this was an attack or coordinated attack when that clearly wasn't the case. They were legitimate questions. I think what we discussed in executive session verifies that they were legitimate questions. I do hold Tom in high regard. As I said this morning on WJOAll, I spoke about that, that as a younger attorney, I've looked up to Tom, especially being a former judge. I did make a comment on the radio today, which I would like to apologize for. I said at one point that when asked about why we didn't go into executive session yesterday, I indicated that this may have been a question of corruption. And it was a poor choice of words. I apologize to Tom personally this morning. I'm doing it in front of the council here. I shouldn't have said what I did. And to be frank, Mayor, I was angry about comments that were made about me by you, and it was a response to that. If it doesn't excuse it, I should have chose my words more carefully. Tom, it's your decision. I hope you stay. I think, I agree that Joliet would be worse off if you left. So I'll, as John Girl said, I'll ask you to reconsider. I vote aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
I'd like to know what Tom wants to do. And I'm asking Tom this because several, the last several months, Tom, you've said, well, if I'm here long enough, or I might go somewhere. And there was an article in the paper where you were looking for another job. So at this point, I'm a little confused whether you want to stay or not.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think, and let me say this, I, first of all, I regret that I am the topic of conversation. We have an agenda packet full of some really good business, and I would love to get into the business and have you vote aye on all of my recommendations and let us move on, because we're in the middle of some incredible times. We've survived. We have the lowest debt ratio of any city in the state of Illinois. We have a $52 million transportation center that's being built three blocks from here, fully funded, on time, and I believe it will be either at budget or under budget, and it's got the opportunity to change the face of downtown Joliet. We have the junior college that we've partnered with, and I see a junior college member here. We thank them for their $50 million commitment to downtown Joliet. We've got a $2 billion intermodal project that is being developed that surrounds the Autobahn, and that has given us an opportunity to be part of the global economy and to become the capital of the export business for the Midwest. We've got some incredible commercial corridors that we need to be spending this time working on finding the right retailers to come in and become sales tax powerhouses for us, so we don't have to go back to the taxpayers and ask them to start footing the bill for the expenses of running the city. And we've got 59 in Theodore, we've got I-55 and 30. We've got a lot of really good things going on in this town. If you're asking me to work on those things, I'll stay here until I keel over working on those things. But if you're asking me to address issues like we did yesterday, and we're talking about rent that totals $1,000 a month, that goes towards running a building that probably has a utility bill that's probably $100, and a water bill that's probably $100, and by the time we're done, that $1,000 bucks is all eaten up. And I think, and I've got thick skin, as most of you have seen, I don't mind it when the arrows are coming at me this way, but when they're hitting me in the back like they did yesterday, and then the comments that I heard this morning, I have to question whether I should be here or not. So, you know, that's my thought. And I think you are the ones that have been elected to set the policy in the course of this city. It's my job to help facilitate it. And, you know, I can assure you, it is not me. I mean, I've got a bunch of people that sit to my left and a guy that sits to my right here that have helped us do this over the last five years. So it's not me. I guarantee you that. But we want to work on those things. Let us roll up our sleeves and do that, and stop the silliness that's going on with little issues over $1,000 a month in rent. That's my answer.
Is that a yes or a no? Well, I always ask questions, and I was rather persecuted myself this morning on the radio. And if anybody took the time to actually look at the pre-council meeting yesterday, I had several reporters call me and ask questions, why did you do this? Why'd you do that? And I asked every one of them, did you watch the council meeting? And they said, well, no, I just heard. Well, you know what? I'm tired of people asking questions when they've just heard or making accusations. I have asked questions from day one on this city council, and I didn't do anything different yesterday than I've done in the past. And I brought it up, and I didn't make any accusations. Again, there's the questions, and this is the job that people elected me to do, to ask the tough questions. And if they were too hard to answer, then I can't help that. But that's not gonna stop who I am and what I stand for. So if you're telling me now that you want to stay and do these projects, I'm still gonna ask questions, Tom. Okay? Because that's what I do.
Dan, if you didn't ask hard questions of me, I would think I'm in the wrong place.
Okay. Alright. So let's just clear the air here, and, but truly, you know, if you want to stay and work on these projects, which are right in the middle of everything, I think it needs to be. However, I don't want to hear any more comments from you about, well, if you want me to leave, I'll go elsewhere. I don't have to be here. I can go to Florida, blah, blah, blah. If you're gonna stay, stay. Make a commitment and stay. Can I get that commitment from you?
You know what? I think what we need to do is, what we need to do is get on with the agenda, and I appreciate Councilman Turk's motion. Completely unnecessary. I think what I'd like to do is just, let's just do our jobs and move on. And whether I stay or not, trust me, we had this same conversation about John going back several years ago, because John was a dynamic leader and led us through some really good times. But that job is just as hard as this job is. And, you know, we didn't think that we would be able to, you know, move on without John. And, you know, I like to think we have, under a little different circumstance. And there will come a day when I leave, whether it's this year or five years from now, there will be someone who will step up and do the job. And that's the way this cycle works. None of us are irreplaceable. You know, whether that happens for me this year or not, I don't know. And, you know, I'm not of retirement age. I still have 10 or 12 or 15 years of hard work in me, maybe more, because I have to pay for a wedding this year. And I really do, you know, I want to stay focused. I want you to stay focused. And use your filters to decide what's important for the future of the city and what's not. And if we have some little issues like Bob raised last night, you know, let's work on it. Let's try to find a way to get everybody at the table and resolve it. But, you know, let's not consume the time of these folks here. And, you know, I want to do the right things and get the business of the city done. I'd rather not be spending my time talking about this.
Well, with all that being said, I didn't know this was gonna happen tonight, and again, you can't talk as a group because that's a violation of the Open Meetings Act. However, I would have appreciated a phone call from someone to discuss this earlier instead of kind of being blindsided by this when things were at such a big turmoil. But if he wants to stay and finish this, I just want open and transparency in this government. And I hope after all this, we can go forward and do that. So Tom, you want to stay? I'll vote aye.
Councilman Turk?
Your Honor, I'm gonna give the finance report before I vote, okay? Kind of goofy, but anyway, we had our finance committee meeting, and, you know, the 2012 year-end estimate was a $1.2 million deficit. And the actual figures came in at a 2.1 surplus, which would add to our revenues. And I would, I would love to say that is because of the finance committee and especially its chairman, but I can't say that. We might have taken a small part in it, but it was with policies and procedures that the city manager put into effect. And he'll be the first to tell you that every single employee of this city contributed to this $2.1 million deficit, I mean surplus, which is a $3.3 million turnaround. And I think it's admirable. And I'm for all moving on, too. And that's the finance report, and I vote aye. And I didn't, when I was sitting in that room was when I decided to make my comments tonight.
Councilwoman Barber?
Well, I am very pleased that Mr. Thanos is gonna stay with us and kind of lead us in the direction that we should go in, and thank you for staying with us. I vote aye.
Mayor Girotti?
Before I vote, I will only ask the members of this council, and it is something I would do. If I have a problem with staff, any member of the staff or any member of this council, rather than airing the dirty laundry in public, let's take it behind closed doors when it involves personnel and get it settled, okay? We don't want to end up like a city close to us when they have two separate blocks and there's nothing getting done. So with that in mind, you know, Tom complimented his staff for all they do, but it takes a good leader, and that's that guy there. And I vote aye.
Motion carried. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. Is there a motion at the minutes of the combined council meeting held on February 19, 2013, and the minutes of the pre-council meeting held on March 4, 2013? Stand approved as recorded.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor Girotti?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now, Mayor Protem, is there a motion that Councilwoman Coleman be appointed Mayor Protem for the term April 1, 2013 through June 30, 2013?
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Mayor Girotti?
I won't ask if you really want this. I vote aye.
You might get lucky, it'll be a month.
Next, council committee reports. Communication Technology and Information Systems.
We met on March 14 at nine o'clock in the council chamber over here, and we had several items of business discussed, but the one important thing, it's on one of the memos this evening, is the business license software implementation. And Kristen's gonna come up and explain that real quick and how much easier, you're not coming up now? Oh, yeah, no. I thought you changed your mind.
Business Services uses a software right now that's a homegrown system, and we've gone out and looked at other systems, and we're requesting that we go forward with using Sun Guard for implementation of a new business license software. The liquor commissioner's office will also be using the software along with the building department for their contractors they license. We believe the system will help improve our existing processing of annual licenses. It'll allow the business owner to go online and renew rather than us having to mail things out. We'll be able to email documents to them and become a little more in the 21st century for that part of the document. There's about 1,100 business licenses annually, about 190 liquor licenses issued annually, and approximately 100 different contractor licenses through the building department. We believe the system will help us improve and streamline our process along with the reviewing of new licenses with it.
Thanks, Kristen. We also discussed the ERP replacement project and then the payroll timewar, or timekeeping software implementation, which is gonna make payroll much easier. And is Rachel here? Can you just, from there, Rachel, just explain the cost and how it's gonna even itself out with the new software?
Okay, when we presented the changeover in software to ADP back in September, October of last year, we were going to have to buy ourselves out of the Ceridian contract, which is our current provider, and we estimated that that cost would be about $40,000 to buy ourselves out of the full-year contract. We, in order to make sure that we implement the system as, with the least amount of, as smooth as possible, we have spent a little more time doing some extra training and some extra testing of the system. So we actually have, we are still using the Ceridian software, so we're not gonna have to pay to get out of that. And so in the end, it's probably gonna be a wash. We estimated that it would be about $40,000 to buy out. Now we're thinking it's about 20. And we have a change or amendment on the agenda today that would, that's a $20,000 increase to the current implementation cost.
So it'll be less man-hours and more accurate and more efficient?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And that's all we have for today. Thank you.
Public Service Committee report?
Your Honor, the Public Service Committee comprised of Councilwoman Barber, Councilwoman Fisher, myself met this morning to review the contract change orders, pay estimate, and final payments, found them all in order, recommend their approval, also reviewed the various public hearings that are on the agenda tonight. We also had a presentation by Bob Pedersen, which addresses, you know, we've spent a lot of money on sewer separation and the amount of, to separate those two, and we're still finding some situations where people are getting back up in their basements. So he devised a plan that he presented to us this morning, he presented to the mayor some time ago. He gave me a copy, and I think maybe everybody here got copies some time ago. And we are sending it to staff to work something up and then present something to the full council. So I thank Bob for his perseverance.
It's a great project. Thanks, Bob. That's it?
That's it, I'm sorry.
I should know other reports under Agenda Items and Reports. Treasurer's Report for January 2013 is recommended this report be received and placed on file.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded to approve. Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman?
Aye.
Councilman Turk?
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber?
Aye.
Councilman Fisher?
Aye.
Councilman Girl?
Aye.
Councilman Hug?
Aye.
Mayor Girotti?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, under Public Hearings, Council memo 86-13, An Amendment to the Annexation Agreement for Autobahn Country Club. Includes a resolution approving an amendment to the annexation agreement for Autobahn Country Club, a resolution approving an amendment to the master development plan for Autobahn Country Club, an ordinance approving the reclassification of 11.24 acres from IT zoning to I-1 zoning, an ordinance approving the preliminary plat of Autobahn Country Club, an ordinance approving the final plat of Autobahn Country Club, an ordinance approving the recording plat of Autobahn Country Club, and an ordinance approving an amendment to a special use permit for Autobahn Country Club located at 3795 Center Point Way.
Mark Basso, you wanna come up and address the council?
Yeah, thanks, Tom. And I'd like to bring up two of my partners. This is Mike Cuck and Tim O'Donnell. We're actually the three founders of Autobahn, so we just wanted to say, obviously, thank you for all the support. We've been working hard, believe it or not, it's nine years now that Autobahn's our ninth operating year, so we're getting close to a milestone. And, you know, we've worked hard to be, you know, we're very proud of being part of the city of Joliet, and we hope that the city will continue to be proud of us as well. A lot of people don't realize that Autobahn has kind of three legs to it. We have, obviously, Country Club, which has really blossomed. We started, you know... We started, you know, nine years ago with about 100 members. Now we're at 400 members. And really, the whole community of members really become amazing. We've got four different member racing series now. And it's something that, that's grown, and you see all the relationships that all the members have formed. And, you know, it's really something to, to see how this club has really grown. I think there's, you know, another 100 members, who knows how, how big we can get, but we certainly have the capacity. Second leg is Realty, which obviously are the team unit lots. And we've been to other facilities like ours around the country, and none of them have the team unit lots that we have, which are the third acre lots that the members have the 100-year ground lease on. And, you know, once again, when we started, we had 19 lots, now we're at 76. We're happy to say we have two buildings that have permits and are going to start construction this year. So, you know, we think that that is going to continue to grow as well. And obviously, that brings in great revenue for the city and the county for tax dollars and everything. And then the other side is really the public side of Audubon, which is Circuits. And Circuits rents out, we have two tracks. So the one track that the members are not using is rented out for all types of different events, from motorcycle groups to car clubs, the BMW club, the Porsche club, the SCCA, NASA, Midwest Council. All these different groups come out and use the track. And, you know, you're getting 100-something participants that come into the city of Joliet. A lot of them come in the night before and they stay in hotel rooms. So it brings in a lot of the, the people that we want to help develop these other retail options that the city has. So it's great exposure for the community. Also, probably the biggest surprise to us has been the manufacturer use of Joliet, of Audubon, and obviously Joliet as well. We have relationships with Audi, BMW, Cadillac, Lexus, Mercedes, Nissan, Porsche. All the major manufacturers have utilized their facility for consumer events, arrive and drive. So if Cadillac has a new CTS model coming out, they'll have five, 600 people come out over the weekend. They'll do press events where the press comes out and drives the cars, and dealer training. So we had Toyota there just last week and had about 400 Toyota sales reps and training come out to drive the new RAV4. So when these events come, they, there's 40, 50 staffers that are staying in hotels for, some of these events go for seven to 10 days. So once again, it's great revenue for the city and restaurants and, and exposure to, you know, to the city. And believe it or not, we're not a spectator facility, but we had over 35,000 people come through our gates last year. So, and it, these are all participatory people. We're continuing to try to get new events and make us more unique. In fact, in, in September, we're going to have Christian Van De Veld, which is a Tour de France and ex-Olympian bicycle racer that is retiring. And he's going to have this kind of farewell celebratory event at Audubon, which is really neat because our three-and-a-half-mile track is, is very safe for bikes, bicyclists. So there's another opportunity that we really never even thought of, that, you know, we're bound to take advantage of. And there are ways in which the general public can come out and use Audubon. We have a performance fleet, which is open for corporate events, and we've had Microsoft and Dell, United Healthcare, and all these corporate events. Instead of taking your group golfing or to a Cubs game, they'll come out to Audubon and they get to drive our performance fleet cars. And we have Audis, we have our R8s and S6S5. We got BMW M-series, Cadillac Vs, Lexus ISFs, AMG Mercedes Porsches. Ferrari's actually going to have a California, so I know, Tom, Italian blood, and you was going to want to get out there and visit. But Nissan as well. So, you know, the public can come in and do, we have open days where individuals can sign up to do these events. And then we do, obviously, the corporate events. And then we're also going to have, for the first time, a, a driving school using radical cars, which are open cockpit vehicles, are very much like a Daytona or open cockpit prototype car that you see at Le Maire. So this is a really exciting thing for us, that if the school goes well, we may actually have our own fleet next year. So, you know, once again, we're, you know, we're committed here to developing Audubon and, and continuing to grow it. And hopefully, for another 10 years, we'll be talking about our 20th anniversary coming up. So certainly thank you for all your support as well.
Just a comment and then a question. I can remember when you come here nine years ago and you said what you wanted to do, and I'm sitting there thinking, you know, are they for real?
No.
But you, you really made it go. Another thing, I'd like to have you email me your schedule on what's going on, and I can, we can get it out to the council if they want to go out there and visit.
Great.
And last question, what is the closest Audubon to you? And how many of them are there in the United States?
Well, we've, we've been, there's several tracks around the country, but the ones that most mirror us are, there's one in New York, Monticello Motorsports Club. There's one in, in Vegas, Spring Mountain. In New Orleans, there's NOLA. So the four of us, I would say, most likely represent the, the level of investment in the facilities that we have. But there's none in the Chicago area.
Any other questions or comment?
Just a follow-up from yesterday. Were we able to contact any of the homeowners association?
No, I wasn't able to. Jim, I don't think there was.
Just, you know, just give them a memo. Thank you.
Krista.
It's in motion and seconded, said resolutions and ordinances be adopted. Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber.
Aye.
Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye, and I'm looking forward to the summer, Mark.
Thank you.
Krista, I've asked, I've been asked to move up 109-13, if you would, please.
Council memo 109-13 is an ordinance approving a special use permit to allow a used car sales lot for up to 10 cars located at 101 North Center Street. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved. Second.
Questions, comments?
Never mind.
Okay.
It's in motion and seconded to approve. Councilwoman Coleman.
No.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber.
Aye.
Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. We'll go back to the Council memo 87-13, which is a public hearing approving an ordinance establishing the 2013 Joliet Special Service Area Number One, which is Cottage Place and Jasper Street. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
This is a public hearing. Anybody, anyone in the audience want to address this? Seeing none, Krista.
Can I get a clarification, ma'am?
Sure.
On all these special service areas, for those whose budget may not support immediately, Tom, they can set up, right? They can set up payment?
Yes, the homeowner's share, if it's owner occupied, is $300. That'll be charged at the end of the project upon completion, once the contract's closed out. In hardship cases, we have done payment plans.
Okay, thank you.
It's in motion and seconded to approve. Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber.
Aye.
Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
I can vote on 87, 88, and 90, and I'll have to abstain from 89.
We're just doing 87.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were doing them all as a group. Too much going on today. Okay.
Aye. 87, okay. Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, Council memo 88-13, A Public Hearing Approving an Ordinance Establishing the 2013 Joliet Special Service Area Number Two, Hutchins Street. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved. Second.
It's in motion and seconded to approve. Councilwoman Barber.
Aye.
Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, Council memo 89-13, A Public Hearing Approving an Ordinance Establishing the 2013 Joliet Special Service Area Number Three, Prairie Avenue. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved. Second.
Somebody stop me if they have a question. Krista.
It's in motion and seconded to approve. Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
I will abstain. This is near my address.
Councilwoman Coleman.
I'll abstain because the parents live there.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, Council memo 90-13, A Public Hearing Approving an Ordinance Establishing the 2013 Joliet Special Service Area Number Four, Miller Avenue. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
Missed the last. Anybody want to speak on this? This is a...
So moved.
Second.
It's in motion and seconded to approve. Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber.
Aye.
Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 91-13, A Public Hearing Approving an Ordinance Establishing the 2013 Joliet Special Service Area Number Five, Youngs Avenue. It is recommended said ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Tom, maybe give a short explanation exactly what this is. There may be people out there that...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we just have reviewed five road reconstruction projects that will be in older neighborhoods in the city of Joliet. The practice going back to the early 1980s has been to have the adjacent property owners participate in the cost of the road reconstruction project because it does have a benefit to the homeowner. It more than likely enhances the value of the, of the home. What the residents will see is a complete reconstruction of the roadway, curb and gutter, storm sewer, sidewalk, and streetlights in some cases. I'm not sure on these five, if there are streetlights or not. Jim probably knows, but it's something that we've been doing for three decades now. And the process that's before the city council is that we do these as special service areas, which are a financing technique allowed by Illinois law that allows the city to have a special tax imposed on the property owners. This is, other residents don't pay this, it's just the ones that are adjacent to the properties. And if it's owner occupied, single family, the assessment for the homeowner is $300. As Councilman Hug indicated, they can pay that on a payment plan if they have a hardship. If it's rental property, it's an escalating scale going up. And if it's commercial, it goes up even more. And the, each document tells us what each assessment would be. It's a program that's worked very well. And unfortunately, we don't do as many as we used to, back when we had the NIP program in a robust mode. We were doing many of these every year. But now, we're still doing five, and it's, we're down to the last few, and there'll be a few more to come. So it's been a good program, and we thank you for allowing us to do it.
Krista.
It's in motion and seconded to approve. Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber.
Aye.
Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next, ordinances and resolutions. Under ordinances, Council memos 104-13 and 105-13 were approved at yesterday's pre-council meeting. Council memo 106-13, An Ordinance Denying a Variation of Use to amend tavern use to allow packaged liquor sales located at 700 Henry Street. It is recommended Council memo 106-13 be denied.
So moved.
I'll second. Can we give an explanation on this one, Dan? Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't know if Mr. Rahal is present this evening. He is the petitioner, Manjeet Rahal of 111 Rosewood Shorewood. This is a, an old bar that had, has been in existence in a neighborhood going back to the early 1900s. That was back when there was a tradition of having neighborhood taps that would serve the people that lived in that neighborhood. They'd walk to it and stumble home usually. And the, in 1990, our zoning ordinance kicked in where these old non-conforming uses lost their legal status. Mr. Galley, who owned the, the bar at that time, came in, obtained a variation of use to allow the bar to continue in a single-family neighborhood. Mr. Galley sold the property seven or eight years ago. Mr. Rahal came in, and it appears that at some point in this process, he started offering package sale of liquors. You can buy a six-pack or a case of beer, walk out and take it home. That's not allowed in this type of a setting. And when it was discovered, we made it clear that he couldn't do it. If he wanted to continue doing that, he'd have to have the variation of use that was approved in 1990 expanded to allow package sales in addition to on-premise consumption, where you can walk in, have a drink, and then leave. This went before the Zoning Board of Appeals, where Mr. Rahal and his attorney appeared. The Zoning Board of Appeals spent a lot of time reviewing the history of this case and came up with a recommendation to deny the request for a variation.
Can we give an explanation on this one, Dan?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't know if Mr. Rahal is present this evening. He is the petitioner, Manjeet Rahal, of 1111 Rosewood Shorewood. This is a, an old bar that had, has been in existence in a neighborhood going back to the early 1900s. That was back when there was a tradition of having neighborhood taps that would serve the people that lived in that neighborhood. They'd walk to it and stumble home usually. And the, in 1990, our zoning ordinance kicked in where these old non-conforming uses lost their legal status. Mr. Galley, who owned the bar at that time, came in, obtained a variation of use to allow the bar to continue in a single-family neighborhood. Mr. Galley sold the property seven or eight years ago. Mr. Rahal came in, and it appears that at some point in this process, he started offering package sale of liquors. You can buy a six-pack or a case of beer, walk out and take it home. That's not allowed in this type of a setting, and when it was discovered, we made it clear that he couldn't do it. If he wanted to continue doing that, he'd have to have the variation of use that was approved in 1990 expanded to allow package sales in addition to on-premise consumption, where you can walk in, have a drink, and then leave. This went before the Zoning Board of Appeals, where Mr. Rahal and his attorney appeared. The Zoning Board of Appeals spent a lot of time reviewing the history of this case and came up with a recommendation to deny the request for a variation. Based on our review as a staff, we're concurring in the Zoning Board of Appeals recommendation that package sales should not be allowed at this facility.
So, he kind of just took it upon himself to start selling packaged?
I think there was some miscommunication with the Liquor Control Commissioner's Office, and it just happened. And I think once it was discovered recently with Jim Green and Jim Murphy and the mayor, there were several meetings with the owner, and it was made clear that that was not going to be allowed unless he had legal entitlement to do that.
Right.
Just in addition, when we told him he could not have it and sent him a letter, he appealed it to the Illinois Liquor Commissioner, Illinois Liquor Commission, and they agreed with us that he does not have the right to have it. So, just a little addition. Other questions?
Motion and seconded to deny. Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Barber.
Aye.
Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.
Councilman Hug.
Aye.
Councilman Morris.
Aye.
Councilman Oderkirk.
Aye.
Councilwoman Coleman.
Aye.
Councilman Turk.
Aye.
Mayor Gerani.
Aye.
Motion carried. Council memo 115-13 was approved at yesterday's pre-council meeting. Next is approval of regular current bills. Council memo 117-13, regular payroll for February 8 through February 21, 2013, $3,060,511.18. Treasurers' dispersments for February 2013, $10,962,425.50, and regular claims for February 2013, $2,413,938.2. It is recommended said regular payroll, treasures, dispersments, and regular claims be approved.
Move to approve.
Second.
Questions? Krista.
It's in motion and seconded to approve. Councilman Fisher.
Aye.
Councilman Girl.
Aye.